Now is the time and place for meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commission members. That I have Commissioner. McAvoy, how do you pronounce that? I'm sorry.
No problem. It's McAvoy. Yes, I'm here.
All right, McAvoy, not that hard. I don't know why I stumbled over it. Commissioner McCann.
I'm here.
Commissioner Mettler?
I am here.
You, I'm here, and I see Chair Adams is here, going to. Never mind. Commissioners Holmes and Speck are accused and absent from the meeting tonight. We are now at Commissioners Communications. Commissioners, any thoughts? Like to add before we start? Okay, we're now at Staff Communications. Staff, any communications?
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Anas Latinsky. I'm the Planning Division Manager in the Community Development Department in Beaverton. Commissioner Winter, I just do just want to let you know that your mic is kind of going in and out. It seems to give good sound when your face is pointed directly at the screen, so it may be a directional issue. And Mr. Fitzpatrick, if you could go ahead and turn off your camera until it's your time to present, that would be great. Thank you. I just have a couple of comments to make before we dive into the agenda today. We do have some newer planning commissioners, so I just want to note that a few things about those agenda items. We have two land use application hearings tonight. One of them is a modification of a previously approved project to reconstruct Beaverton High School. And the other is a modification to a conditional use that has been in place for some time. So for both projects, you'll find that there are references to previous land use approvals in the material that you will hear about tonight. And then the final item on the agenda is a work session for the Designing Walkable Places project. And for for those hearings, Planning Commission acts as a decision maker. Whereas for the work session, it's really an opportunity for staff to present information about a project that is underway. And also get feedback and answer questions from Planning Commission about that work. So I just wanted to touch on that, kind of set the tone for for the rest of the meeting. And with that, my remarks are concluded. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Latinsky. First item on the agenda is the application for LU 32024-00963. West Coast Self-Storage Expansion Case File Number CU 32024-00960. DR 32025-00102. And LO 22025-00101. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comp Plan, and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. Criteria that must be addressed this hearing are 3.03.1 FAC Rev. Facilities Review, 40.15.15.4.c, Major Modification to the Condition Use. 40.20.15.3.c, Design Review 3, and 40.1. 40.50.15.1.c, Loading Determination. Testimony, Arguments, and Evidence must be directed toward these criteria or other criteria in the Comp Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond. If the issue may preclude an appeal to Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written testimony or gives oral testimony is standing to appeal this. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to both conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue. May preclude an action for damages in certain form. Date local law requires commissioners to make certain disclosures. Ends, the following question will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contacts, or site visits due to clear?
I do. I am a customer of West Coast Storage for about two years and have been to the site. A dozen, a couple dozen times. I do not believe so.
That you made the declaration, or did you follow it up saying, I believe that I can be an impartial participant?
Yeah, sorry, your mic was cutting out a little bit, but I I believe what you said was, I believe that I can be an impartial participant. Okay.
Commissioner McAvoy?
Yeah, just a site visit to report. I live in the area and when this application came up, I took an opportunity to drive by and look at the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Mettler? No, I already saw you. I have no potential conflicts of interest, ex parte contact, or actual conflict of interest. Commissioner McCann?
No to all three.
Thank you. Commissioner Adams?
No to all three.
I'll include you into the next, even though you're not in my list of victims. Does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits? Or challenge the right of any commissioner to participate in this hearing? Next. Let the record show no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation followed by commissioners' questions of staff. The applicant will be given 20 minutes for its presentation, followed by the commissioners' questions of the applicant. Then members of the public in support of the applications can speak for up to five minutes each. Then members of the public opposed to the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will then have five minutes to speak. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. Planning Commission will then hear any final comments from the staff. Now I'll begin with the staff presentation.
Greetings, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Aaron Harris, Senior Planner, City of Beaverton Community Development Department. And my presentation this evening is for LU 3 2024-00963, West Coast Self-Storage Expansion. Land Use Application CU 3 2024-00960. DR 3 2025-00102. And LO 2 2025-00101. Staff notes that a supplemental memo to the June 4 staff report was provided to the Planning Commission yesterday. Because the staff report addressed the incorrect threshold triggering the need for a Design Review 3 application. Some findings were modified as a result, and the memo includes a list of updated items. This slide provides an overview of the proposal, the applicant requests approval. Of a major modification of a conditional use application. And a Design Review 3 application in order to replace three existing single-story buildings with a single three-story storage building. The proposal includes a loading determination application to allow a Type B loading berth to serve the new building. Site improvements include new lighting and landscaping. Here's a vicinity map of the site and surrounding area. The subject site is located on the east side of Southwest 125th Avenue. The site is 1.6 acres. This slide provides the existing uses on the site. And the surrounding area. The subject site is an existing self-storage facility. The properties to the north, east, and west of the subject site are residential neighborhoods. And the property south of the subject site contains retail and a childcare facility. Here's the zoning map of the site and surrounding area. The site zone residential mixed A has other properties to the north, the east, and the west. To the south, the properties are zoned neighborhood service. Here's a site plan illustrating the applicant's proposal. The new building is proposed interior to the site, east of the existing three-story self-storage building. Existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation patterns to and from the site are not proposed to change with this proposal. Nor will the vehicular and pedestrian circulation patterns where users enter and exit the secured storage area. Site improvements include replacing existing painted walkways with new concrete walkways. New lighting is proposed in vehicle and pedestrian circulation areas. And an eighteen and a half foot landscape buffer is proposed along the southern property line. The proposed building is approximately 34,214 square feet. And Design Review 3 is required by code for new construction that adds more than 30,000 square feet of non-residential floor area in a residential zoning district. The proposal requires a major modification of a conditional use approval. Because the proposed expansion will increase the square footage of an existing conditional use by more than 1,000 square feet. This slide provides elevation illustrations of the proposed south and west-facing facades of the building. And this slide provides elevation drawings of the north and the east facades. And here are some renderings that better illustrate the proposed loading area along the western elevation. This slide addresses the loading determination application. The code does not include specific loading requirements for a self-storage facility. The closest related use is warehouse, which requires a Type A loading berth. The applicant has proposed a modified Type B loading berth instead of the Type A berth. This facility was approved for large loading spaces in lieu of a Type A loading berth with its original 2015 approval. And these loading spaces have been sufficient for the needs of the facility. The applicant has provided turning maneuvering templates that demonstrate how a typical loading truck can safely utilize the proposed loading berth. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve West Coast Self-Storage Expansion, subject to conditions identified in the staff report. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff regarding the proposed application?
Yeah, Chair Winter, I have a Commissioner, I have a quick question. So I just wanted to make sure I understand this correctly, Mr. Harris, that the that the loading design that's being proposed now is consistent with the original approved application, right, dating back some years?
Yes, the I I was not able to find specific dimensions for what was previously approved in the materials. They were described as oversized parking spaces. But what's being proposed here is a Type B loading berth, a modified Type B. So we're looking at a proposal that would be 30 feet long and 14 feet wide with a minimum height clearance of 20 feet high.
And so, and that's also consistent with what has been in place for for some number of years, the previous structures, is that right?
Yeah, I believe this proposed loading berth is larger than what was approved with the previous for the existing building that's on site.
Okay, great. I also just wanted to follow up really quick, and and this might be this might be because of what was included in the the updated memo there yesterday. But there was in the original staff report, there was some mention of changes in the lighting design. And I noticed that did not come up in your staff report today, that there was something about the lighting design and documentation of of their choices that was insufficient. So there was a condition of approval in the original staff report. Has that been?
Yeah, the 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 conditions, so so the memo is intended only to replace attachment C.
Okay.
The staff report, so all of the conditions of approval in the staff report remain as is.
Okay, great. Thanks for clarifying.
Any other comments, Commissioners? Thank you, staff. Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant, the applicant will now have 20 minutes to present. Please begin by introducing yourselves, state your names and addresses for the record.
All right, I'll lead us off. My name is Dirk McCullough with Jackson Maine Architecture. You said address, like my home address or my my work address?
Or choice.
All right, 311 South First Street, Seattle, Washington, 98104. And so I'm I'm the project manager for this project, and I'll introduce the rest of of my design team, and then they can introduce themselves as well. But we've got the representing the applicant, West Coast Self-Storage, is Jim Fitzpatrick here tonight, and then Chris Delorye. And Ryan Nguyen with TM Rippey, sorry, TM Rippey, representing for civil engineering. But I'll let you guys introduce yourselves and write your addresses.
My name's Jim Fitzpatrick. I'm with West Coast Self-Storage. Address is 4609 East Via Straya, via Phoenix, Arizona.
Thank you. Next. Any else?
I'm Chris Delorye. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
I am the civil engineer record on the project. TM Rippey Consulting Engineers at 7650 Southwest Bevlin Street. Suite 100, Tiger, Oregon, 97223. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, and I'm Ryan Tyng Nguyen. I'm the Civil Design Engineer. Address is 7650 Southwest Bevlin Speed, Suite 100, Tiger, Oregon, 97223. Thank you.
Is your team?
So yeah, this is our our design team, and of course, we're here representing for West Coast Self-Storage for this this expansion of their facility at 9540 Southwest 125th. Just a super, I'm going to keep this brief, because you guys have, you know, have seen, of course, the staff report. Brief history, West Coast Self-Storage acquired this property in 2008. It was a very small self-storage facility at that time. And then they have they expanded it to its current configuration in 2015. And then we're proposing this expansion in our continued efforts to to serve this community and bring this this amenity to this community. As as Aaron mentioned, the the we propose the removal of the existing single-story buildings to replace them with a single three-story building that's about 34,000 square feet. And this will encapsulate all the storage activity instead of having exterior access to buildings and to make more efficient use of the property. We've worked, the design team here has worked closely with planning and development staff and Tuauton Valley Fire and Rescue on this current proposal. We're very, very appreciative. It's been really wonderful to work with with Mr. Harris and and Tuauton Valley Fire and Rescue to develop this proposals. We're very appreciative for their time and input and efforts. And we're happy to be here and answer your questions, any of the commissions' questions this evening. So we'll leave it off there.
Thank you. Questions of the applicant from any commissioner? Now is an appropriate time to ask a question? Done. Cut off light. Next up, public testimony. We are now at the public testimony portion of the agenda item. All for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application. And those in opposition to the application. And those either in favor nor in opposition. As a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to the application. Now is the time for testimony in favor of the application. I see none. Okay, now is the For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using raise hand feature. Calling in, press nine to alert the chair if you would like to speak. Have any questions, any testimony in oppositions? Apparently, staff says there's no opposition, so have no opposition, we have no public testimony in favor. Questions? Right along. No rebuttals since there's no questions, there's no questions. Final staff. Does staff have any final comments?
No final comments, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Close of the public hearing. With final comments completed, I will close the public hearing. Now is the time for deliberation. As a standard procedure, I will randomly call on commissioners to discuss the application. Actually, to discuss their feelings on the application. Start with Commissioner Adams.
It looks like according to the staff records that they've done their due diligence and everything looks good. I'm happy to see that they're expanding in the city of Beaverton. That's nice, but I see no reason not to move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Commissioner McCann?
I agree with Commissioner Adams. It seems pretty straightforward, and I don't have any concerns with the proposed application.
Commissioner McCann? Commissioner Mettler?
I have, I also have no concerns, and everything looks good in the staff report, and I agree with the staff findings.
Commissioner McAvoy?
No, I agree with my fellow commissioners there. The conditions look appropriate, and the materials all seem to be in order, so no concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner. Apparently, we have completed the end of this. There a motion to continue to approve or deny?
Based on the record and the findings and conclusions in the staff report, I move to approve application LU 32024-00963. West Coast Self-Storage Expansion Case Files Number CU 32024-00960. DR 32025-00102. And LO 22025-00101, subject to the conditions as presented in the staff report.
Chair, Chair, if I, if I'm We have, we have staff attorney, Ms. McIntyre, talked in.
Thank you, Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney. I would just like to add that because a supplemental staff memo was presented. If we could add that to the motion, if Commissioner McAvoy would want to amend his motion to add, based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report and supplemental memo.
Commissioner McAvoy, would you like to?
Do I need to recite the entire thing all over again?
Or you could just, no, you can just say you would like to add the findings in this supplemental memo as well. And if there are no objections from anyone, if Commissioner McAvoy can just amend his motion, unless there are other objections, is that is that fine? Okay, thank you.
So I would like to amend my motion to approve to also include the facts and findings in the supplemental memo dated June 10, 2025.
Okay. Since we have, I would like to support the amendment of the through the process. I need to have some votes. All those in favor, say aye. Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Aye.
Commissioner Mettler?
Aye.
Commissioner McAvoy?
Aye.
And I am in agreement too. Motion passes unanimously. After, the Planning Commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provide oral and test. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must
Chair Winter? Apologize for interrupting, but I didn't catch who seconded. Apologize for interrupting, but I didn't catch who seconded that motion.
I didn't ask to second. I'm sorry. That was me going right past it. So I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Already voted. That was my mistake. Planning Commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimony. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Beaverton Development Code and the rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. So, one down, one to go. The second item on the agenda is the application for LU thirty two zero two five dash zero zero one forty six, Beaverton High School, modification of the decision. Case file, DR two zero two five dash zero zero one four four. Applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, comprehensive plan, and any applicable code provision. Criteria that must be addressed tonight are Development Code sections forty dot zero three dot one, facilities review, forty dot two zero dot one five dot three dot C, design review three, fifty dot nine five, modification of a decision. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward these through criteria or other criteria in the development plan. Excuse me, in the comprehensive plan of the code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the planning commission, other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anybody who submits written comments or provides oral testimony is standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages and certain. A law and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following question will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual interest, ex parte contacts, or site visits to declare? Start with Commissioner Adams.
No to all three.
Commissioner McCann.
I have an actual conflict of interest because I and my firm are currently working on this project. So I will recuse myself for this portion of the meeting. I'll turn off my camera temporarily, so I am not part of it.
Goodness. See you later. Commissioner Mettler.
I qualify as a site visit. I pass through the intersection in question frequently on my commute home. And have been, been passed it many times.
Got no conflicts of interest?
No conflicts of interests and no, no potential conflicts of interest.
No ex parte contact?
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner McAvoy.
No to all three.
Thank you. Oops, sorry. Let the record show no response. Order of the public hearing tonight will be city staff will give a presentation.
Chair. Chair, I don't know if you said it, and it just didn't come across on the, on the mic, on your mic, but just want to make sure the public has had an opportunity to challenge any of the disclosures.
Does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits or challenge the right of any commissioner to participate in this hearing? Seeing none, let the record show no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation followed by commissioners' questions of staff. The applicant will be given twenty minutes for his presentation, followed by commissioners' questions of the applicant. Then members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Then members of the public opposed to the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will then have five minutes to. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. Planning Commission will then hear any final comments from staff. Now begin the staff presentation.
Good evening. Thank you, Vice Chair Winter. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Steve Regner, Senior Planner with the current Planning Division. The application before you tonight is, actually, let me share my screen first. That would be a good idea. All right, the application before you tonight is Beaverton High School, Modification of a Decision. Case file LU three twenty twenty five dash zero zero one four six. I also want to introduce Kara Hall, who is the Assistant City Transportation Engineer, who will be also here to answer questions tonight. And I'd also like to draw commissioners' attention to the supplemental memo circulated earlier today, dated June eleventh, conveying public testimony received by staff following the publication of the staff report. This is kind of a different type of land use application, so I'm going to do a little bit more history and explanation than you might see in a typical development. So if what you're hearing is old news to you, I appreciate your patience, but hopefully there's a little bit of, a little bit of catch-up for some newer folks that weren't here when the high school was originally approved. So Beaverton High School has located just west of downtown, has been a school in some way, shape, or form for almost a hundred years now. But a couple of years back in two thousand twenty-three, Beaverton School District came through the permitting process for the redevelopment of Beaverton High School, which included an almost three hundred thousand square foot new main instructional building, total of near three hundred and fifty thousand square feet of total floor area, new parking, new vehicle circulation, new renovated athletic fields, some new and renovated athletic buildings, and actually a lot more on this list than I could fit on this slide. Point being, it was a pretty massive project. Here is an overview. Actually, I jump one. This is what the high school used to look like, a main instructional building here in the middle. Historic building here, Merle Davies, cafeteria, annex. A lot of those buildings were affected by this, and now this is close to what was the approved product. New main instructional building here along Farmington Road, new circulation and parking here kind of in the middle. Like I said, some renovated athletic fields, a couple of new athletic buildings, pretty, pretty major overhaul. But what we're actually going to be talking tonight is really only at the intersection of Farmington Road and Cedar Hills Boulevard up here at the north end of the property. The actual request tonight by the applicant is to eliminate a condition of approval placed on the two thousand twenty-three approval that required the construction of a new crosswalk at Farmington Road and Cedar Hills Boulevard. For those who haven't done a lot of development review and land use application approval, you've probably read a couple of staff reports at this point, and they have some number of conditions of approval on there. Conditions of approval are really kind of an extra requirement to make sure that something is conducted or a need is fulfilled after land use approval. It's a way to kind of get a project over the finish line, where maybe it's like ninety-nine percent there, but needs its one little extra thing. There's a couple of different big reasons why we might put a condition of approval in there. One would be that, like, like I said, like, a plan is like ninety-nine percent compliant, and instead of making them get it fully fixed at land use, we, you know, for lack of a better term, kick the can a little bit down the road and say, yeah, you're almost there. We know compliance is feasible, so we'll just say, when you get your construction permits, give us an updated plan that shows compliance. And actually, these conditions are from the approval. So condition E thirty-nine identifies that the street lighting plan wasn't quite perfect. There were a couple of spots missing, so instead of them making them fix it upfront, we just said, hey, when you get your construction permitting, update your street lighting plan to make sure that it actually does meet our technical standards. Another reason why a condition of approval might be placed is that staff or applicant might not actually have all the information at the time of land use, that there's going to be some decision made down the road that we can't actually write affirmative findings for at this time. But it's a way to make sure that it's a check down the road, that you don't have to go back and do another land use application, that we just have another way to do it. A good example here was that we knew there would be rooftop units, but we didn't know how big they would be. So it was hard at the time of land use to confirm that they'd actually be properly screened. So we wrote a condition of approval that said, hey, before you get your building permit, show us your rooftop unit, show us your screening to confirm that that development code requirement has been met. There are tricks to kind of let an applicant get over the finish line, but make sure that we have checks in place to make sure that all the relative approval criteria are met or can be met down the road. So those are kind of the purpose of condition of approval generally, so let's talk a little bit about this one in particular. This is a close-up of the intersection of Farmington Road and Cedar Hills Boulevard. You can see it's a three-leg intersection. I'm sure most of you have driven it at least once or twice, if not every day. Like I said, it's a three-legged intersection, and there are crosswalks along the western leg of Farmington and the northern leg of Cedar Hills Boulevard, and of course, the area of focus tonight is that absence of a crosswalk on the eastern leg of Farmington Road. At the time of land use permitting, staff identified this gap in the circulation network and identified that it would be a benefit to the pedestrian network to add that crosswalk during the construction process and created a condition of approval requiring that crosswalk be built. The condition of approval language there is in the upper left. I'm not going to read it all. But it essentially says, when you come back for construction permitting, show a crosswalk at that intersection and then build it like you show on your plans. So staff placed that as a recommended condition of approval in the staff report, and at the hearing, planning commission agreed that it was an appropriate condition of approval to include. And so they approved the project with that specific condition of approval, and it is actually specifically in condition of approval number thirty-four and land use order twenty-nine fifty, and it was incorporated into those final approvals. Now, as a project goes, little things change. There is no way that a project, especially a project of this scale, would actually be built to the exact inch standard of, of any project. So as a project develops, lots of little things change. Typically, we don't come back to planning commission if a window needs to shift a little bit, or you're adding or removing a door. Typically, we don't come back to planning commission for that. However, if an applicant is requesting to modify or eliminate a condition of approval placed by planning commission, we do have to come back to you as the decision maker to get that modified or eliminated. So that's really the reason why we're here tonight, is not because it's met a certain design threshold, like it's a big building, or it doesn't be designed standards, but mainly it is because this process originally with the planning commission places condition of approval on there, and so we are required to come back to you for modification or elimination of this condition of approval. So, like I said, this project was approved by planning commission. That was in August of two thousand twenty-three. And then Beaverton School District, the applicant proceeded with the project, doing their construction permitting, breaking ground, going vertical. If you've driven by there, you can see the tremendous progress they have made. But in a parallel path to fulfill this condition of approval, the applicant had their transportation consultant conduct an analysis for how best to build the crosswalk along this leg of Farmington Road. And the transportation consultant went through, and I believe this is exhibit three point three of the applicant's materials, went through and conducted an alternatives analysis to identify different ways maybe building that crosswalk. And unfortunately, their conclusion was, no matter what alternative they considered, there would be significant adverse impacts to the vehicle queuing and delays at the intersection. These impacts would create potential safety hazards to both vehicles and pedestrians in and near the intersection. We're talking increased likelihood of collision, increased likelihood of undesirable pedestrian behavior like jaywalking, and potential delays and queuing in some pretty critical areas on Cedar Hills Boulevard, specifically the heavy rail line, which is very close to this intersection, as well as queuing in the Broadway and Cedar Hills intersection, which is also very close. So really, it's this proximity to heavy rail and the Broadway intersection that makes this so difficult to actually implement. If we were to move forward and have this crosswalk be built to mitigate these adverse impacts of safety hazards would require significant and extensive improvements to the local circulation network well beyond the scope of this project and would just be too much to ask for, for this project to follow through on. So because of those safety impacts and the extensive mitigation requirements that would need to happen, staff is in agreement with the applicant that it is appropriate to remove the subject condition of approval from land disorder twenty-nine fifty, meaning that we would no longer require them to build the crosswalk. It is important to note that the remainder of the project, excluding the crosswalk construction, would still move forward as approved. Buildings would be the same, landscaping, parking lots, all would be exactly the same. And all of the other conditions of approval in the two thousand twenty-three staff report and land use orders would also remain in effect. So this is a very narrow, very narrow change to what was previously approved. And to conclude, staff, because of these reasons, recommends approval of Beaverton High School Modification of a Decision, LU three twenty twenty five zero zero one four six. And staff is happy to answer any questions the applicants may have, or excuse me, that the commissioners may have.
Thank you, Mr. Regner. Are there, oh boy, we've got some questions. All right. Let's start with Commissioner McAvoy, since I've got your name for this.
Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Regner. Appreciate the presentation there. Can you just clarify? I was trying to find my, the photo in the application, but at that, I guess it would be the northeast corner, is there a sidewalk present there right now where that proposed crosswalk would have gone?
Yeah, so there is a crosswalk. Essentially, you've got your curb return here, but then it stops. So there's no, there, there shouldn't be, let me say, there should not be any pedestrian activity along the northern end of Farmington Road. So really, if you're making this crossing here, you're not even going, you don't even have full access when you cross the street. It would only be a northbound movement, which we have on the, the west leg of Farmington Road currently.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mettler, what would you like to add?
Is this for crosswalk only, or is there, in the plan, was there any plan to have like a pedestrian light or anything like that?
No, the extent of the intersection improvements for pedestrian infrastructure, I believe, would simply be the crosswalk. The original plans required dedication for future buildout of Farmington Road, something that is not required by this project. It would be kind of a future city project. But the, the final product would still have the crosswalks at the two legs, two out of the three legs of the, of the intersection, as you see here.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner McAvoy.
Yeah, sorry, and as a new member, just correct me if, if this question should be directed elsewhere, but can you just kind of crystallize for me the criteria that on which we should be making our determination? You know, in other words, are we, are we to decide whether or not the designers have tried hard enough, have evaluated enough alternatives? What, what's that criteria that we should be making our decision on?
Yeah, so, so this is actually in Beaverton Development Code fifty dot ninety-five dot seven. And I can, for commissioners and anybody watching at home, I can cite the page that that starts on. That would be page twenty-five, twenty-six of the staff report. But there are essentially approval criteria that say that there is a reason why that this should be removed or modified. Either that there was a mistake of law or fact occurred, or it could not be implemented for reasons beyond the control of the applicant, or maybe circumstances or law has changed. So there, or that it may be a newer modified condition actually better furthers the intent of the original. So as, as staff sees it, it's that second approval criteria that the condition can't be implemented for reasons beyond. Essentially, if they built the crosswalk as, as we as staff wanted them to do, it would actually create incredible difficulty, not only with the existing queues, but conflict with the rail line and conflicts with creation of gridlock at Broadway and Cedar Hills, things they don't really have control over. So yeah, so it's fifty ninety-five seven, A through B. But in this case, staff sees that it's that second approval criteria be where really is kind of doing the heavy lifting here, because the applicant, they'd be happy to build the crosswalk, but we actually don't want to see those adverse impacts created.
Great, thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions of staff? Seeing none. Thank you. Now is, now is the applicant's time that applicant will now have twenty minutes to make their presentation. Please begin by introducing yourself, stating your names and addresses for the record.
Good evening, Beaverton Planning Commission, my name is Stephen Sparks. I'm the executive administrator for long range planning with Beaverton School District. I do have other members of our team here at the meeting to answer any questions that you might have. You know, when you have question time for us, I don't have a PowerPoint to share with you. Mr. Regner's presentation was very thorough. I have nothing to add, you know, that he has, you know, missed or anything like that other than to say that we agree with the staff report. And to provide a little context to what Mr. Regner said in his comments about conditions of approval that, you know, will move the project to conformance with the approval criteria. With this condition, we knew that this would take additional research and coordination, particularly with ODOT and their rail section for this condition of approval. We didn't have the the evidence prepared yet to go to ODOT. But once we had the land use approval, our transportation consultant, DKS, was able to spend that time with ODOT, Washington County, and other parties to talk about, you know, how would this work? And as noted by Mr. Regner, we do have a memorandum attached to our materials, which outlines the reasons why the condition would not work. And as Mr. Regner noted, I I don't need to repeat all them, so we'll just say we agree with Mr. Regner's report. The, in response to, I think it was Commissioner McAvoy who asked about the criteria. Yes, we addressed Section fifty ninety seven B, but we also addressed the facilities review criteria as required by the city staff, which is Section fifty point zero three. Our responses to those criteria are in our materials. And I can't think of anything else meaningful to add to what Mr. Regner offered already. But I am happy to answer any questions that you might have. And as I said earlier, we have staff here also who will be happy to answer questions. Oh, and for the record, I didn't do my address. One two six zero Northwest Waterhouse Avenue, Beaverton, nine seven zero zero six.
Let me ask a question if you don't mind. I'm not familiar with this, with the pedestrian habit system at that particular intersection, I barely go there. Is there much pedestrian traffic at that intersection? I'm concerned, here's, kind of in the back of my mind, I'm concerned about, and I'm not an attorney, so legal issues should really be in front of my mind. But bear with me while I go beat my dog. Hey!
Well, Commissioner Winter talks with his office assistant. I would like to invite Garth Appenatus to participate here since if we need any, if we have any pedestrian counts for this intersection, Mr. Appenatus would have it.
Let me finish before you begin.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm concerned, the reason I'm asking, where I'm going with this, is if if something happens to a student at that intersection, because we don't have adequate crosswalks. That's my concern. I'm not saying that one more crosswalk is going to make a big difference, but I'm just, it just seems to me that right next to high school, we should have everything crosswalked we could possibly put crosswalk. I understand the tracks and the terrible congestion at intersection, I've been there before multiple times and I avoid that. But I just, that's, that's kind of the cloud I'm thinking of, it's like, and I didn't know that, I never really paid attention to Farmington Road not have, not have in sight. But that's just another.
Before Mr. Appenatus weighs in, I have two observations for you. One, because of the design speeds of Farmington and Canyon Road TV Highway, students that live north of the high school will be provided, there are transportation routes for those students. So they don't have to walk north up that way. The other observation I would make is, as Mr. Regner responded in a prior question, there's only one way to go when you cross the intersection, which is north. And having the, you know, we have sufficient capacity to have pedestrians proceed north, plus that distance between, on the west side of the intersection is shorter than the east side of what that crosswalk would be, which leads to some of the problems that we had in terms of creating additional congestion in the area, given how the the light for pedestrians would be longer and would not clear the intersection as as rapidly. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Appenatus to address pedestrian counts and pedestrian safety.
Thank you, Mr. Sparks, Garth Appenatus with DKS Associates. Ten fifty Southwest Sixth Avenue, Suite six hundred, Portland, Oregon, nine seven two oh four. So I think there were a couple different parts to that question. First, I I do not believe I have seen any recent pedestrian counts at that at that location. Some of the data we had was was from several years ago. I can, I can try to dig that up, but I don't have that right on my fingertips right now. Related to pedestrian safety, though, I think it's, there's a couple important items there. Number one, for any kind of crossing treatment, there's a number of design criteria and things that need to be met in order to to make it safe and accessible for the traveling public. So so in this case, in, you know, when we're thinking about safe pedestrian crossing of Farmington Road, it's not only putting in a crosswalk, but then there's the associated traffic signal components, the 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 visible alert to pedestrians when it's safe to cross. But then also in this case, too, we need to be thinking about, you know, there's also the 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 treatments of the ramp, be sure that they're ADA accessible. But also, as noted, once you get to the north side of Farmington Road to the east, there is no sidewalk connection. To the north, there are some portions of sidewalk connection. But from our, from our initial coordination with with some of the other entities, including ODOT Rail, it would appear that there, to to make that connection, there would be additional improvements needed further to the north. And so again, just to put that sidewalk piece, or just to put that crosswalk in, there would be additional improvements needed further to the north. And that's just for the pedestrian piece of it. As as was noted, there's already a safe two two code crossing provided on the west side of of Cedar Hills Boulevard. And then the one other thing I'll note on on the safety, too, is just just big picture, even if all those improvements were made, both not only to the crosswalk, to the intersection, north of the intersection, along along Cedar Hills Boulevard, connecting up to Canyon Road, even doing all those things by implementing this additional location for pedestrian crossing, it introduce, it introduces additional safety concerns. One of those safety concerns, as Mr. Sparks alluded to, was depending on, depending on the treatment, you might have additional people trying to make that crossing. They they see the crosswalk, they think it might be safe, they still use it in an unsafe manner. One of the alternatives we looked at would require, because of the complexities, unfortunately, would require a two stage crossing. So people would cross to the center, to the center median, have to wait there, and then later cross. The other thing that comes into play is from a vehicular standpoint, and that the, as as was noted earlier in the in the staff report, the the potential for motor vehicles to back up and queue over not only the rail cross, not over the rail tracks, but also in front of Broadway, and potentially even back up to to Canyon Road. And so it introduces other safety components. Back to the safety considerations for the lack of the crosswalk today. It is a closed crossing, there is a barrier up indicating that it's a closed crossing. And so that's, that's one of the things that's, that's required to be in place in order for, you know, to 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 deter crossing maneuvers.
Okay. It is a mess, it is a difficult business. Anybody else, any other comments, staff, from Commissioner? Seeing none? We are now at the time for webinar. Here are now public testimony portion of the agenda item. We will call for testimony, starting with those in favor of the application, and those in opposition to the application, and those either in favor or in opposition. As a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to the application. Now is the time for testimony in favor of the application. And for those viewing via Zoom, please communicate by raising and using the raise hand feature in the Zoom menu bar. Calling in, press nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. Staff has alerted me that there are no comments in support of the application. Now is time for public testimony in opposition to the application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, as I mentioned, the raise hand feature here, menu bar, calling, press nine to alert the chair you would like to speak. Have any questions? Staff has alerted me there are no conversations in opposition. Now is the time for those who are neither in favor or opposed to speak. Those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the hand feature of the menu bar. Calling in, press nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. See, motion to staff that there are no comments. I have any public testimony in favor or opposed? There any rebuttal? Comments, there's probably no. Commissioners have any final comments, questions? None?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I just want to make sure that staff didn't have any additional comments.
Got that far.
Okay.
Thank you for the question. That's next on my list of things to do. Final staff comments, does staff have any final comments?
Thank you, Commissioner Winter, again, Steve Regner, City Beaverton. Staff has no additional comments on this, thank you so much.
Thank you. With final comments completed, I will close the public hearing. Now is the time for deliberation, and as is standard procedure, I will randomly call on commissioners for discussion on the application. Commissioner McAvoy?
Uh, nothing additional.
Commissioner Adams, I'll get you in here under the wire.
No additional comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Mettler?
Uh, no comments on this matter.
And I have no further comments, thank you. Planning Commission's decision, wait, 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 is there a second, no discussion, all right. Oh, we take a by roll call. When your name is called, please say yea or nay. Commissioner Adams?
Chair, Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I I just want to the emotion needs to be made, and I just also wanted to remind the commission that this one has a supplemental memo as well that arrived later. So consider that in making your motion.
Yes, I need a motion to continue or deny.
Um, based on the record and the findings and conclusions in the staff report and the supplemental memo dated June eleventh, two thousand twenty five, I move to approve the application of LU three two zero two five dash one one zero four six, Beaverton High School modification of a decision, case file number DR twenty twenty five dash zero zero one four four, subject to the conditions as presented in the staff report.
I'm, what I heard was not the right number for land use. Not the first half of it, I think, one one zero. That part of it.
Yeah, I'm happy to, I can find the right number, bear with me. I'm sorry, which which part was not correct, Chair?
Land use.
LU three two zero two five dash zero zero one four six?
I misheard it, but that wasn't the number I heard.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a second?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion. Every rule you rule, I roll call. Commissioner Adams?
Yay.
Your name? Commissioner Mettler, yea or nay?
Yay.
McAvoy?
Yay.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Commission. Was the supplemental memo referenced in the motion?
Yes, it was.
Oh, it was, okay, excellent.
The motion passes unanimous. The planning commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that receive oral and written testimony. Like to appeal this decision, must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Beaverton Development Code rules land use. Part three, Commissioner Adams, are you going to stick with us?
Chair, I am headed out, but thank you.
I see Commissioner Ham has joined us. Final agenda item tonight is a work session on the Designing Locking Places project. Order of the work session tonight will be as end with the city staff presentation, followed by discussion and questions of staff by the commission. Planning commission will then hear public comments regarding the work session item. Individual comments will be limited to five minutes and must be directed toward the work session. Commissioner may ask additional questions of individuals providing comments or staff. I'll begin with the staff presentation, presented by Associate Planner Senator Pinkster and Long Range Planning Manager. Evening.
You're muted.
And now to your staff.
Still muted.
Oh, no.
There you go.
Okay. Um, apparently, I'm having technical difficulties, can you see my screen?
PowerPoint.
Excellent, yeah, perfect. So, good evening, Commissioners. And the first thing that I want to do is to let you know that you should have a supplemental memo in your inboxes right now that was sent just a little bit ago. I apologize that that did not get to you earlier. For anybody watching, that memo can be found on the Beaverton Proposed Development Projects page, which you can find by Googling Beaverton Proposed Development Projects, if you want to follow along as we go. It's a very short memo, shouldn't be too difficult. Too difficult. Um, so, um. To the presentation. Good evening and thanks for having us back. Um, I'm Sarah Lee Hickson and Brian Martin will be, um, presenting with me. Um, there'll be a couple of times during this, um, presentation where we can stop and, um. Discuss what we've talked about, otherwise it'll be a really long presentation and you'll have to hold on to your questions for a very long time. So, um. Uh, straight in, we have, this is the agenda. We'll talk about what the project is. Um, and when, where we were when we last saw you, which was March twelfth. Then the changes that we've made since then, we'll go into some details on some of those changes, um, and then we'll finish up with next steps. So the project itself is to revise regulations, so we hope to end up with new development code. Um, making it easier for people to live in vibrant spaces with easy access to work services, shopping and play. So, um, living in spaces that have easy access to the other things that they need. Um, the project is in response to state requirements. Uh, for climate-friendly and equitable communities work, um, and for walkable places there. And also, um, our own housing production strategy to increase development flexibility and capacity. In areas that are zoned correctly for that. Um, it builds on work and changes that were already done to downtown and Cooper Mountain. So the project is applicable, the work that we're doing is applicable throughout the commercial mixed use and multiple unit. Um, zones. You can see those on this map in the, the green and the brown. Um, those are existing zones and we are, um, not changing the names of any zoning, um, or changing the allowed uses in those zones. At this point, um, the project is designed to be transit-supported and to support transit. Um, a lot of these are around max stations and the increasing capacity is going to be around, um. Max and bus stations. Um, and particularly the frequent bus service, which is this dark blue line here. The max is the red line. Oh, not dark blue, thick blue line. Uh, the other blue lines are other bus services. Um, so we've been working on this project for a while. We have gone to a number of boards and commissions. Um, we had an online survey. We had a community meeting, um, and we have been to you twice already. We've been to, um. We were here in January and also in March. Um, this is our last work session before we roll into, um, looking at. Um, an adoption process for, um, our, a hearing process that hopefully will end in adoption for the code. So what, what we have done so far, where we were last, when we left off, and for those new commissioners, what we had done. Um, the first thing is we have proposed increasing intensity. So this is allowing, um, bigger buildings, um, allowing more use, uh, allowing more use of space. Um, in areas that are designed for those uses. Um, and allowing the most intense development in places that have really good transit service. Um, generally speaking, right now, the code regulates intensity in a number of different ways. It uses building height, it uses floor area ratio, it uses density. Um, and then some other things that all kind of add up into differently, into different restrictions on intensity. Um, sometimes the code is, um, contradictory. It will allow a really large floor area ratio, but a really small density. Or a really tall building, but a really small floor area ratio. Um, which means that it is unclear what the code allows, what the code wants. And, and also makes it really difficult to figure out exactly what is, what can be built in those places. We are proposing moving to a paradigm where maximum intensity is generally regulated through floor area ratio. Floor area ratio, as you can see in the diagram, is, um. It is really a measure of how much floor there is in relation to how big the site development area is. So a hundred percent, uh, a floor area ratio of one. Can be built in lots of different ways, but it basically means you have the same amount of floor area throughout a building. If you add all the floor areas up, as you have building site, as you have development site. Um, we're looking at increasing these floor area ratios. Um, some of these areas don't actually have floor area ratios, but we're looking at. Increasing these floor area ratios. Generally speaking, in the areas close to frequent transit, we're looking at floor area ratio of six. And the ones further, further away from floor area, we're looking for, uh, the, the, further away from transit. We're looking at a floor area ratio of four. Um, that little black bounding box you see there is around the Allen Boulevard corridor. Um, this is an area that has been studied. It is, um, a really, it has, uh, it's a really diverse area. Um, and it is showing some signs of, um, development that may displace people or displace services. Um, that are culturally relevant. So we really wanna, um, as much as we can avoid, uh, avoid displacement there. So we're proposing that that have a maximum floor area of four. Except if it's also, except if development is also providing affordable housing, in which case, um, it can go up to the six elsewhere. Um, because the buildings are getting bigger, we also need to look at basic design standards. Um, how people experience buildings is based on design as much as it, site and building design. As much as it is on the actual size of the building. We had proposed regulations for bringing buildings up to the street, ensuring that pedestrians have access to those buildings. Making sure that parking is deprioritized or behind or beside buildings. So that it does not dominate streetscape. Um, we looked at revising standards for landscaping and open space to make sure that it does the things that the community have told us that. They really want from those. And also making sure that we have standards for ground floor windows, both on primary frontages, so on frontages. Against the road that is considered to be the most important and secondary frontages or other roads. Um, and making those, um, scale, not scalable, but make, having those different for different types of uses because. The impact of having that, um, connection with the street is different for different types of uses. Um, that was where we were. Um, I went really, really quick. Um, in terms of what we have done since the last time we talked to you. Um, we have looked again at zones and development standards for the zones. We have, um, been able to do some more analysis to be able to prefer, uh, propose. Standards for the station community sunset area, which was not shown on that previous map. We have also, um. Been working on how to respond to the comments that you had about large buildings next to single unit residential. And the conversation that we had with council about that too. We brought your concerns to them. And we've also been looking at site and building design in terms of building locations, orientations. Uh, circulation and parking, usable open spaces and landscaping, buffers, roofs. Building, uh, entrances, also standards to do with drive-throughs. Um, we also make, we have also, um, looked at and provided definitions. That have needed to be either modified or added or removed, based on the other proposed changes that we had. I will not get into definitions in this presentation, but Brian and I will cover most of the rest of it between us. Um, so in terms of the zoning districts, um, and. Mo- mainly this is to do with the station center sunset area. Which is this area up here, round Sunset Transit Center. Um, you can see it also down here. I enlarged the box. So you can see this is area in purple. Current zoning, um, and also Washington County zoning has that, which is what most of that area. Some of that area is now, um, has shown this as the most intense development anywhere in Beaverton. Um, to honor that, we are showing a floor area ratio of seven here. Um, which is more than the rest of the, um, than the rest of the city. Um, to honor that previous work that was already done. Otherwise, the map stays the same from last time we saw you.
Ms. Hickson, can I interrupt really quickly?
Yes, absolutely.
I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this maximum floor area ratio. So, uh, uh, um, a maximum ratio of seven. Is it correct to say that that means that the building could have seven times as much area as the lot on which it's built?
That is correct.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Got it perfectly. Um, so, um. These buildings are, these buildings could potentially be really tall. A lot depends on the design of the building, but they could potentially be really tall. And, um, we heard your concerns about that and your concerns in particular about how that could impact. Existing single unit development. Um, and we looked at different ways to, um, mitigate those impacts. Height transition, um, standards appear to, uh, based on our analysis, appear to be, um. One of the better solutions. Um, height transition standards mean that in areas close to zones that allow single detached homes. Um, po- there's a maximum building height for a portion of the site. Most of these zones right now have a maximum building height of sixty feet. Some of them have a hundred and the station center sunset one is actually at a hundred and twenty feet. Um, so this little diagram kinda shows where they are. That sixty feet is the, the bottom, um, dash line is sixty feet. And we are proposing a standard that says that if you are within thirty feet of the property line of one of these. Zones, um, that have single family residential on them. Then, um, you can't go any higher than sixty feet for that thirty feet. So this is thirty feet, um. Horizontal distance and the maximum height there is sixty feet, vertical different distance. Um, if you get further away, the building can go up, um, to. However high they can get the floor area ratio, they want to put the floor area ratio. Um, so that's the basics of that proposal. Um, I'm gonna stop there and, um, see if you've got any other questions or you have any comments about that.
I have one additional follow-up question. So the, in terms of intensity, the maximum area ratio applies to. Uh, a single, a single parcel. Are, are there any, um, any codes or standards here, regulations? Governing the intensity among parcels, you know, with like within an area, some sort of cap on the number of structures. That are above a certain height or the combined floor area ratio or something like that.
Um, the floor area ratios we're gonna be, generally speaking, are going to be looked at for a development site. Um, and a development site is not necessarily the same thing as, as a property. So if you're looking at a series of prop, if you're looking at a series of parcels. Um, the floor area ratio will be for the whole site. Um, if they are just looking at developing one parcel, it would just be that parcel.
Gotcha. Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. So we had, I'd, I'd mentioned a little bit about, um. Parking location. Um, we are, a lot of the standards that we're proposing are really based on standards that are. Already existing in the code for areas on what are called major pedestrian routes. Major pedestrian routes are. Fairly limited, um, street, uh, street lengths that are mostly around max stations. That were, um, identified quite some time back as areas that should be more walkable. We've heard from the community and also through this, um, the climate-friendly and equitable communities state regulations. That we really should be expanding those walkable areas to most of the city. Um, so we are looking, uh, so we're looking at expanding it mostly existing standards. Um, making sure that vehicles are kept away from the street, that vehicle parking is screened. Um, that it should be, it shouldn't be in front of buildings. That, um, ground level parking structures shouldn't, so parking structures that have the ground level be parking as well. Are moved off the primary street and onto secondary streets. Um, and also we need to change the code to take out those major pedestrian route maps. Um, I'm gonna switch over, well, we're gonna switch over to Brian's dulcet tones now. Who's gonna talk about, um, office and landscaping?
I don't know if I can live up to dulcet, but, uh, I'll do my best. Sorry. Thank you. Hi, uh, Commissioners, I'm Brian Martin, the Long Range Planning Manager. And, uh, to continue on with the theme of, that Sarley started of, um, how do we. Unlock the development potential of these areas, um, and they're zoned for more intensity. So like. Now we're fixing the code to actually allow it. Uh, how do we make them great places for humans, uh, as well? So. One of the things that can work with the height transition standard is the, is buffer requirements. And buffers are, landscape buffer requirements are intended to address anticipated conflicts. Uh, or significant differences in sort of activity between two different uses. Uh, the current code takes an interesting, uh, approach. It actually focuses attention on, um, the zone boundary. And the graphic on the right, uh, it has a lot to absorb. But the main takeaway is the green bars are where buffers would be required, uh, under the current code. Um, and you can see sometimes the buffers actually do end up between, uh, uses that have different kind of intensities. Um, and where there could be impacts, so between apartments and single detached along that zone boundary, for example. Uh, but sometimes, uh, you have the same condition with apartments next to single family or commercial next to single family and there's no buffer required. Cause they're in the same zone. Um, and then, uh, you, you all also might notice that sometimes buffers are required when the uses are the same. So along that boundary, there's still apartments next to each other and there's a buffer required between apartments, even though they're very much alike. Um, and we don't require buffers between apartment buildings on the same site. So like, why would we do it on neighboring sites? Uh, another couple quirks with the code currently is if the setbacks, which is the, which is the required. Uh, distance where no building occurs between the lot line and the buildings on the site. If that shrinks or is small or. Non-existent, then the buffer goes away too. And the current code doesn't really address noise. Next slide, please. So the proposed approach is to focus. The buffers that are supposed to address impacts where the impacts, uh, would be likely. Um, based on uses being next to each other across property lines instead of at the zone boundary. So you can see how those bars, those green bars moved. Uh, so every time you see commercial next to single family, you see the buffer or apartments next to single family, you'll see the buffer. Uh, the buffer requirements have been tuned up a little bit to, uh, address those expected impact. Generally, the distance is smaller. But we're hoping, but with the landscaping and other requirements, we're hoping the, uh, buffering is, is adequate. And then there are cases where, uh, noise is anticipated. If you think of like having a body shop. Next to across, you know, with a single family across the lot line. Uh, noise attenuation would be required in certain cases like that where noise is expected to be an issue. Next slide, please. So the commission heard about that in March, if you were around. Uh, the recent changes that we've been, uh, working on since then. Uh, oh, and I forgot to mention what's in the buffer. So this is a good reminder. That picture shows it. So the buffers are basically, uh, involve space. Uh, so there's a, an area where you can't build between the lot line or a dimension where you can't, from the property line where you can't build. Buildings. And inside there, uh, is usually trees and buff and, uh. Shrubs and ground cover, and then sometimes there's a hedge or fence or wall required on a lot line. And then sometimes there's a hedge or fence or wall required on a lot line. Uh, but the recent changes are we reorganized the language to so it's in sections uh where we have actually a purpose statement. We have uh where it's applicable, where it's exempt, so where you have to do it, where you don't have to do it, and then standards, so it's a little clearer how it works. Uh, we decre- decreased the percentage of evergreen trees required in the buffers uh based on planning commission comments regarding allowing light to reach buildings, especially in the gloomy uh winter months. So hopefully people get some light in their windows. Uh, we refined where the buffers apply to focus on situations where the impacts would be likely. Uh, required buffers where industrial is across the street from lower us from residential uses and they have outdoor activities like storage and loading, uh things like that. Uh, that was based on a comment during the city council meeting and it's the only case where we're really requiring things across the street because the sort of noise and visual impacts could be uh significant in that case. And um we added a discretionary alternative buffer route. If the standards don't work on the site or don't ki- kind of make sense for the situation, someone has the ability to do a discretionary path where there's a judgment about what's adequate in that case. Next slide, please. Okay, different topic. Um, the other green sort of requirements are uh open space and landscaping. Um, and the current approach uh basically does it as a percentage of the site. Um, if either ten percent in multiple use zones or fifteen percent elsewhere. Um, in some cases, active open spaces required. There's kind of a menu that you can choose from. Uh, it could be playing fields, it could be a playground, it could be a community room inside of a building, um gardens, things like that. Um, and um, the landscaping amount of kind of landscape materials is geared toward the size. So uh X number of trees per X square feet or X number of shrubs per per uh X square feet. Next slide, please. The proposed approach includes the same elements, um but kind of splits the splits the open space and landscaping a little bit into different requirements and changes the focus to usable open space rather than just open space. Um, so the current code has less information about what makes quality open space. With this approach, we say we want it to be usable and have some specific standards about what that means, what the minimum would be. Um, and the usable open space is to focus opportunities to gather, focus on that and making sure people have a way to, you know, meet their neighbors and have community. Um, there's a little more flexibility in the options that you have. Um, and the graphic on the upper right gives you an idea of what usable open space can be. It could be plazas or green space uh outside uh like you see at the bottom there. Um, it could be courtyards or terraces inside the building. Um, it could be community rooms um uh inside the building as well. Then it can also be private open space like patios on an upper level or balconies for each unit. Um, as far as how much is required, for non-residential uses like commercial areas, it's five or ten percent with five required near transit and ten percent farther away. For residential, it's by unit, so forty-eight square feet per unit or fifty-six with forty-eight being near transit, fifty-six being farther away. And then if you have a mixed use building, you just do the math on both and like whichever is a mixed use situation, you go with the larger of the two. Uh, and in both public outsides stuff and private inside stuff can count, although there are some limitations about how much you can do of uh one or the other. Next slide, please. So that's what everybody heard in March. Some of the, some of the new news uh about what we've been working on since is uh we adjusted the percentage of usable open space required for mixed use buildings and near transit to five percent just to kind of match the approach uh of less near transit and more elsewhere. Um, and then we uh we added some language that institutes are sort of a reflects current practice of how site is considered in these in these requirements. So in the image to the right, you see a big yellow boundary for that commercial development. And the yellow boundary is the whole site, like that's one owner presumably and then all those so commercial buildings share parking and it's kind of one thing if you pull into the shopping center. Sometimes uh and tha- that happens a lot in these districts. There's a lot of these shopping centers with these parking lots. Sometimes there's a redevelopment of just por- a portion of the parking lot, for example. So there wasn't actually a recent project that's basically that red boundary. Uh, if you base their open space and landscaping requirements on the whole site, they would, that would be a, there would be a lot of la- of requirements that's disproportionate to what they're, what they're actually doing. So the site uh we consider that is like this, the the project site, the site they're disturbing in that larger site. Uh, and that red boundary has like a new drive-through and a building and disturbed kind of redone parking area. So that was, that ended up being the site definition. Um, and we also updated the design guidelines since March as well. Next slide, please. For landscaping, uh, it's a similar approach as on the open spaces slide. It's either ten or fifteen percent uh which zone you're in in the current code. And that's the same idea in the proposed code with lower numbers. So multiple use zones are five percent, commercial employment, residential ten percent. Um, now those numbers are lower, so you might be kind of wondering like what happened. But the other numbers were kind of the combined open space landscaping. And now we've got separate usable open space and landscaping requirements. So the landscaping requirements give you kind of the minimum amount of green that we're like we're expecting and then you can always do more. Um, so those are, those percentages are for sites a half an acre and more. For less than a half an acre, we don't have a minimum requirement. But there's other code requirements that do require landscaping, even on small sites. Buffers that we just talked about, if there's a parking lot, there's gonna be parking lot landscaping requirements. Um, and then any part of the site that doesn't have uh a building or pavement on it is gonna be required to have ground cover, which could be grasses or bushes or uh shrubs, um, things like that. Excellent. Okay, so the new news since March on landscaping is um, as I just described, we're proposing to do it by zone rather than by like development project type. Um, and then we, we increased the number of trees and shrubs required in the landscape area. Um, and you'll, you can look at the details in that uh particular section. Um, and we also revised, as I keep saying, the design guidelines because they were pretty rough the first time. So we updated those uh to try to give, again, those those design guidelines are for the discretionary path. If someone sees the standard and they don't think they can make it work or they've got a special site or they got a better idea, they can try the discretionary route uh to see if we can, we can approve that as having a a good outcome. I think that's it for me. Next slide. Yep. All yours, Sarla. I, were you gonna open it up for questions again?
Yes, I was. This seems like a good one. Anyone questions right now? Okay, then we will move on. Um, so in terms of um building design, we have focused in on um entrances to buildings. Currently, the code has um a definition of primary entrances, which are all entrances that are open to all building uses. So anything that anybody who uses the building can use is a primary entrance. Um, we are also uh proposing standards for prominent entries. These are ones that have some architectural features and that face the street. They are um designed to really show that the the building faces the street rather than faces the parking lot. Um, they give, they help give a sense of place and vibrancy to the street itself. And and they can um, they can actually, depending on the the standards that they choose, they can also be part of that um that usable open space um uh to an extent um if they choose to do courtyard type entries. Um, we also wanted to, we had already talked about having buildings built up to the street. We wanted to be really clear about which street is primary and which street is secondary. And we have uh the proposed code has established criteria for determining um the order that you would uh pick those streets. Um, we also took a look at the code that is about um roofs, that is currently about roofs and roof farms. Um, one of the things that can really help how people experience, um particularly tall buildings, but any buildings with any bulk to them, is does that building have a defined base middle and top? Um, a lot of the standards that you've seen have been about that base, they've been about the the ground level stuff. Um, having a defined top can also make a difference. Um, the current standards are, include standards about roof farms, which do not seem to um meet current um priorities for the community. Um, however, there are, there is definitely a priority um on sustainability and how we can impact that. Um, so we have added some requirements for defining the top of the building, but we've also added a requirement, uh there's a menu of things that an applicant can choose from to add some kind of sustainability feature. If you have a flat roof, whether it is painting it white so that it um reduces the 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 temperature impact it has or having um stone water gardens on top of the buildings or a a number of other um methods that they can choose. Um, uh, I also said that we had been working on drive-through standards and the drive-through standards um are really all about making sure that the conflicts between pedestrians and pedestrians or people who are rolling and people who are in cars are minimized and making sure that um pedestrians and those who are rolling, whether it's mobility devices or scooters or whatever it is, that they have equal access to those services. Um, so that's where the standards um for drive-throughs um are going. And that is basically what we've been working on. Um, so our next steps, actually, let's, let's stop there. Do you have any other questions about what you've heard? Oh, I can see you talking, but I can't hear you.
The volume is just very, very low.
There you go. Okay, all right, my microphone just woke up, sorry. Um, so on the drive-through standards, um I saw one thing in there as you flash it up that said if there are, uh, is there a a walk-up window provided there must be weather protection? Um, is there gonna be a standard around providing walk-up windows?
So if a building allows people inside and they can get services inside, they don't need to have a walk-up window. But if they don't have that inside space, so if they're, if they previously have been just drive-through only, um, then yeah, having a walk-up window that is separate from that drive, from that driving traffic, yeah, that would absolutely be part of that.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, um, so we'll have more time for comments at the very, very end. I think you've got like maybe one, two screens left. Um, so um our next steps are to um tighten up this draft code to make sure that it's ready for the hearings. Um, also to work on the comprehensive plan changes that are needed, they're pretty minimal. Um, we need to delete those major pedestrian route references and maps um that we've been talking about, they're in the code, they're in the development code and the comprehensive plan. Um, we also need to um, because of the C F E C require, the climate friendly and equitable communities requirements, please stop me if I ever speak planneries, it's not necessary. Um, we need to adopt the twenty forty center designation, so those are the regional centers, town centers. Um, I think our regional center, I think the regional center boundaries are basically adopted. We have some other town centers. Um, some of the town centers are adopted, some of them are not, but we basically share all our town centers with somebody else. So, so there's a process to go through to make sure that they're all uh that that we're not all using completely separate boundaries for those. Um, and then there's an opportunity for us to um address a a a a couple of outdated and inconsistent policies um that are around these things that we're touching. Um, so as I said, the, we're, we're getting ready for the hearing process. Um, public notice for hearings should go out in August and um we expect to come back to you in September and then have city council do um their hearings in November. That is the expected schedule at this point. Um, and so now we have the questions that we have for you. Do you have any feedback on the proposed height transition standard? And do you have any questions or comments about um what we have talked about, the current draft code provisions?
Um, would you be able to, is it to navigate back to the height transitions uh slide again? I realize that's quite a ways back.
There you go.
So a- am I correct in saying that currently there is no height transition standard, right? The proposal is to add one of these certain zones?
That's correct, yeah. But there is currently a maximum building height in all of those zones. And we would be, we would be uh swapping that out for just relying on floor area ratio.
Uh, my only question is, could you just remind me again one more time how uh how you arrived at those those numbers for the transition?
Yes, so most of the zones that would be impacted by this have a maximum building height currently of sixty feet, um, which is why we used sixty as the the kind of the the distance, uh the the vertical distance. The horizontal distance um was a little less scientific, shall we say? But it was uh, we basically looked at different sites. We, we did some Google drive-bys and a a lot of site uh site plan review to see where it really, to kind of look where makes a difference and how it feels on the site. Um, so um, yeah, it's, it's a work of art. Um, but it, it was our best estimates.
Right, um, I I can imagine that challenge. Is um i- is the, how would you summarize the primary concerns o- over a situation with, you know, a very sixty-plus foot tall building adjacent to a two-story detached single residence? What's the primary concern?
Um, yes, so the the primary concern is um that buildings will feel um, that those in single family homes will kind of feel loomed over and and that that bulk will be too much for them. Um, and that is, um, it, it, it can happen um based on design and particularly if there were no setbacks there and they were just going all the way up to that theoretic hundred-plus-feet building um that we do not have a market for right now, but could come. And it really could have, it really could have the impacts that way. Um, I was also reminded that um the maximum building height in the single family zones Um, I was also reminded that um the maximum building height in the single-family zones. Is um between thirty and forty feet. So that kind of putting that distance between the property line and the where you have to. Where the buildings can go, that's, it's also related that way.
Um, I I guess my final question or i- is, was any consideration given? I mean, it seemed to me that one of the major concerns would be light, blocking light, especially given our long gray winters. Uh, any consid- consideration to, um. You know, further refining the code by cardinal direction, like the, you know, on which side of the single dwelling? Is the large, i- is the large structure located?
Um, we did not give that, although it is certainly something that I have seen done in other places. Um, and if that is something that seems relevant, we. We do still have time to take a look at that. If that's, if that's what the planning commission would like, I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, just uh, I just wanna jump in with a cou- a couple thoughts on that, um. Commissioner, the. I s- I see where you're going with that, and I think if, I think if shadows were the only consideration, we might have spent more time with that. Um, but it's probably the. The combination of like shadows and the sort of psychological feeling of of having that, that does difference in height. Um, I, also, there's a lot of variables that come in, like we don't know which way the house is facing. Uh, or where that house is on the lot. Um, it could be, it could be farther away on the lot, on the residential lot too, where the little house is. Uh, it could be facing the street, like the side street instead of the front, so like the back is to the building and so like it, maybe it's not as big of a difference. And and then I think it's just the complexity of that, um, it's a little bit easier for. Applicants, developers and staff to kind of understand a consistent, like every time it's the same way. Not that that's always the right answer, but um it's a factor.
Sure, I appreciate that, and my, my question wasn't intended to send you off on a, on a wild hair chase to. Develop iterations of code and that sort of thing, um, mostly just learning, so thank you.
A great question, thank you.
If that is it, uh, Chair, I just wanna make sure we thank. You can always ask more, but, but if you're not going to, thank you so much for your work along the way. Uh, we did learn a lot uh from your comments and tried to incorporate them, so thanks.
Missions be good, it says I'm supposed to ask for public comments, do we have any public comments listening? Staff, are there any public comments? Those viewing via Zoom webinar, staff is telling me there are no public comments. Alright, staff has said we have no public comments, that's it, then we can adjourn. Somebody has some. After staff, I was thinking staff probably would have some additional comments.
We're, we, yeah, we don't have any comments, thank you so much.
I'm, I'm kind of looking at.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I just wanted to thank everybody for uh for attending the meeting and uh. Uh, and say have a good night.
Alright, we are now adjourned at eight nineteen P M. Thank you.
Thank you much.
Have a good evening, have a good rest of your evening and we'll see you whenever.